Say something.
Here we go, it says Unified Government E-News.
Mayor, the link that was sent out on the E-News, folks aren't able to use that link to get on to this meeting. Do we need to send something else out, or I don't know what the story is? You're muted.
Yes, I should think so. What do we?
Yeah, let me, let me start checking on it and find out.
Okay, thanks, guys. I just thought I'd let you know upfront because we'll be hearing about it if we don't. Thanks.
You can also go to our website and go under events and the link is in there.
Okay.
On the front page.
Okay.
Under events.
Both meetings have also been posted to our Facebook page. We're in live.
Report, I'm reporting back Doug. They went to events and they got on. Okay.
Got off somehow.
Yeah, Mayor, we are promoting Commissioner Burrows. He keeps bouncing back for whatever. He might have a bad connection. It's dropping him off there, but we'll keep putting him back up.
Okay. I'll give another minute. All right, I'm going to get started. Before I call the meeting door, I want to announce that due to COVID-19, we have individuals attending remotely. All participants joining by phone should mute their phones when not speaking to avoid background noise. During the meeting, please make sure that you announce your name and title every time you speak so that the public that is participating knows who is speaking. This is critical given the remote participants and his current guidance from the Kansas Attorney General. I'd ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. You are hereby notified that I have called a special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to be conducted virtually on Thursday, August 26, 2021, at 5:00 PM for the fifth budget workshop and setting the maximum mill levies. Roll call. McCarron.
Here.
Ramirez.
Here.
Johnson. Kane. Commissioner Kane. Commissioner Markley.
Here.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Here.
Commissioner Bynum.
Here.
Commissioner Burrows. Mr. Townsend.
Here.
One more time, Mayor Albee.
Here.
And let's see, Commissioner Kane, I did not get you the first time. Thank you. Commissioner Burrows.
He was on briefly and then it looks like he got cut out again.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. So tonight we have a budget workshop, discussion on the mill levies. Turn it over to Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Doug Bach, County Administrator. So as commissioners are all aware, we've had a series of workshops going on throughout this year, dating back to early parts of the year when we started to do more strategic planning, thinking about where we were going in the direction of the budget, offering input, what we should start to put into it, obtaining community input as we did that through a public hearing and also going through the process of soliciting information through the course of a survey. Tonight's workshop, and I'll ask to have a presentation loaded up onto the screen. Tonight's workshop is really, we will start out and we will walk through our overview of the documents just to highlight this for the commissioners, what's all in it, and then for members of the public to understand the areas that are covered. We will also talk about our capital and equipment projects that we have. Could you go to the next slide? Thank you. We're going to go to the CMIP overview. With this, we'll talk about the areas that where we need funding, but we'll also be sure to point out within this chart, areas from where the commission were the last time they went into CMIP in greater detail back in April and May, as to some changes that were made in the final document that was presented. We're going to go through the long-term financial forecast. So as we presented this budget, it puts us in a better position to look forward. And with the data we have today, looking forward for a few years to say, okay, the numbers we have, where does that take us into 23, 24, 25, and years out from there based on where we're at? We have the maximum mill levy slides in here. However, as the commission recalls, back in January, we set the, set the number that we were working with in order to abide by the new state guidelines. Thus, we do not have to adopt any kind of maximum mill levy because essentially at that time, we adopted what would be the maximum by setting that out and forward. So there's no formal action tonight, but that's just a reminder of showing we can't go over that part without changing the maximum mill levy. So that is set from where the max would be. And then we have a few future workshop topics that are mentioned and there may be more. The commission has and of course our budget calendar is out there. Next slide. All right. So as we move into the overview of the budget, I'm going to call upon our budget manager, Reginald Lenzing, to walk through the highlights of this year's document. Reggie?
Thank you, Doug. So I'll start out right now on the screen is the cover. So one of the things that is neat about the budget document is that it has a table of contents that is clickable. So you click on the table of contents and it will take you to that page. Next slide, please. So we also have the county administrators message section, which includes a budget message from the county administrator. Also included in here is a presentation that happened on Thursday, October 19th for the 2022 proposed budget. Next slide. In the third section, we have the commissioners' visions, values and goals and budget guidance. And here we have like vision statements included here, the mission statements included here, and also the strategic plan values. And we also have the strategic goals, which is the pinwheel on the right side of the page. And the next slide, please. We also have the org chart for elected officials and appointed officials. And the next slide, please. Next slide illustrates the internal and organizational org chart. And next section is our community profile. This is a really cool section. It includes a lot of history and the form of government, major services provided by the unified government, also provides community statistics. Next slide. And next we have the budget overview. And here we're trying to dive into where we have a budget calendar, also provides information on the budget process. If you want to see exactly how it works and have some time to read that. And then also we have a summary of the budget policies and then so also a glossary of terms. Next section. Next section is our financial overview. Here we have the notice of budget hearings for, for our funds. And then also, next slide, please. We have the expenditures by fund and also the mill levies associated with those funds. And then also here we have a fun detail and summary of all the certified funds. And one of the things that you can also find here is our almost 30 different funds that we have that are certified by the state. You can find the fund balance for those and also the historical information for those. So on the screen right now, we have the county general fund, which basically you can see takes us back to 2018 as far as actuals. And then you can see like where revenue categories that we have and then also expenditure categories that we have and see the fund balance for each particular fund. Also in this, in financial, we do have a dedicated sales tax fund summary. And then we also, other section is a department overview and department financials. So here we can find a section summaries for our different functional areas of our government, which include general government, public safety, judicial services and community services and also public works. So within the department overview, next slide, please. You can find a overview of like important issues within the department, also the highlights of the department and then also new initiatives. So this particular overview is looking at the historical museum. And you can go to the next slide, Rocky. Thank you, please. And this slide right here kind of ties into the overview. It kind of shows the financial for the historical museum. So basically what you can break down is look at the different expenditure categories at the top of the page. And then also you can drill down and look at the full-time equivalents, which are the positions that are assigned to the historical museum. And then you can look at the different funding sources and what the funding sources are, whether funds that I just kind of touched on. So historical museum is funded by the county general fund and also our tourism fund. And then you can see down at the bottom of the page, one of the new requests that is being proposed for their historical museum. Next slide, please. So the next section is our CMIP section and it includes, next slide, please, it includes the executive summary and kind of goes through the process and the policies associated with CMIP and gives an overview and highlights of all our CMIP. And then there's, next slide, please, subsection summary, which provides detail on our capital equipment, our capital cash projects and our capital debt projects. And next slide, please. So here is a a view of our CMIP schedule. Their schedules within the document for equipment and cash, projects and debt projects. And what we do is look at these over six years. So on the left side of the page, you can find either a piece of equipment or a project and kind of follow it out and follow the funding out for, for six years. Next slide, please. And current and beyond this, this current slide shows debt project authorizations and this provides detail on the authority of what debt would be provided and the detail on debt that would be provided. Next slide, please. And then we also have like project detail reports to show projects that are funded in 2022 to kind of give you a description of them and also show the operating costs associated with those. And then also just show the cost going out for six years and provide you a picture or snapshot of what that project may look like. Then we have the grant inventory and grant inventory is broken down by department and funding source. So the funding sources are federal grants, state grants. And then also we have a combination of federal and state grants that are granted to us together. And then there is private contributions also. So personnel overview provides a summary of the personnel and discusses personnel assumptions and talks about personnel impacts that we've experienced and also that we expect to experience in the future. Next slide is our position inventory by fund. And these is related to all the funds that I talked about really well. We have almost 30 funds. And it shows the positions that are in each of those funds. And next slide is a different view of the position inventory. It is by department. And within the department, it shows the classification of the different positions within the department. Next slide is our employee pay benefit assumptions. And basically these are the benefits that the unified government has. Yes.
Could you come closer or speak a little bit louder?
Uh, could you come closer or speak a little bit louder?
So the, and this particular slide here is their employee pay benefit assumptions. And here we show the benefits for the unified government uh, with their responsible for for all our employees. And next slide. Are our financial policies. And and basically what you can find here are detailed policies. Uh, you'd also be able to see the commission resolution date and also the adopted date. So from there, I'll turn it back over to county administrator Doug Bach.
Thank you, Reginald. Appreciate the overview. I think the other thing that's not mentioned as Reggie went through it is our budget staff enjoys going through and. Pulling out pictures that they get from employees or community meetings and activities around as you see them. Usually try to find those that are related to the specific, like the one on the cover beside, but sometimes they are just general pictures that are. They're associated with it like when we're talking about policies to get pictures of our employees in here and and community events. The next area as we go into is over for our capital equipment um, and projects. Uh, this area is being laid out to really just show the guidelines of things that, one. While we're adding money back in for projects. We're still away from where we are. When we look at like this slide demonstrates in terms of wastewater. That's an enterprise fund. It's a fully funded enterprise fund. So when we identify the need. We raise the money that matches it. Stormwater is another enterprise fund. I think where we see here is. With the anticipated increase that we're putting in, we're still not meeting the need. So we have three point four million yearly. We need to increase ourselves to this point. And adopt a policy going forward by the end of the year that allows for the permeable surface rate and looks for increases as we go through. So we see a small increment recommended in this budget, but still one that will require the commissioners to work on this with staff. Um, through this year, so we put ourselves in the best position to leverage W F I dollars and other federal grants. And take advantage of those at this time. Excellent. Different funding buckets that are out there. Bridges. You can see we really don't have money in terms of what we need to to take care of our bridges, which will mean as some of those fail. We will have to leave them closed for longer periods of time. Street maintenance. We're about halfway to where we need to be to cover this. Our public buildings, a little bit over half halfway to what are our projected yearly needs going forward. Uh, we're not really close from where we should be for our parks buildings. And our traffic engineering gets a little bit better in that regard as there's a lot of safety around that. So we try to try to. Direct funding as close as we can to to keep up the need in that area. Next slide. More specifically in parks. Recreation programming. You see each one of these is laid out. We're about half of where we need to be for programming and maintenance. When we reflect back on things we looked at for our recreational plan. And then trails being something that is a a larger goal to come into, but. To really meet that, we need to put more money than we're currently dedicating to it. Next slide. Um, the following list really goes over the priorities. This is one that we set out with the commission a couple of years ago. Uh, put us in a position to, by the public work staff coming through, putting the scale, they worked a lot with the um, public works and safety. Standing committee to develop this. It makes everything very programmatic based on data to come through and say, how much is the cost of a project? What's the, what is the project name and then the composite score? So this is kind of a ruling sheet as it comes down the side. Not all like the number one item on here are something that's unfunded. It's really listed as that's more of one of how much do you need to get it up to the funding level that's required to match where we need to be. On a given year as we go through this. So we include this. These are the projects that haven't made it up to get up to the next level. You know, concrete repair, we can do a lot more in there. And then here's additional list of other projects and and where they fall on the chart as we go through them. Through this composite score that was developed with staff in that in the commission a couple of years ago. And we continue to utilize the staff as we bring things forward from a priority. Okay, next slide. Um, then the last group here, these don't get put on that list because they're not community projects. They are really just specifically. Noting to what our unified government building projects are. So. These are ones that we don't have funded. We do have several building projects in our list and money attributed to that. But these are still ones that are outstanding that we have not built into the five-year plan. As we look forward for for work to be done on our own infrastructure. I'm not going through item by item. This is to put back that information in front of the commission. I know you see it through the course of the year as we work through C M I P. Just think it's important to note the list and the outstanding number of infrastructure, and I know the commission and the public has held. Infrastructure is a number one priority for us to be to be working on. So. Just getting this back into your hands for future decision making.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, can you go back to slide thirty-five, please? The Hutton Road Park, you've got down as a million dollars. And I was told by a staff member the other day that that wouldn't cost at a maximum would be like two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Um, this number comes from our staff members. They generate these and put these on. I don't. I I guess if you could maybe tell me offline what staff members told you that and I could follow up with them and um. Find out where that's coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so the next slide after this. Goes as the changes and I'm going to turn this, Reggie, are you going to take this?
Yes.
Okay, I'll turn this back over to Reginald Lindsay and he's going to walk through the um, C M I P changes. From where we were earlier in the year, and I think Reggie will point this out, but you know, many things are just changed from how the what funds they're in and. Titles and stuff like that, but there are some actual projects that have been increases or added to. Reggie?
So the changes that we're going to go through today are based on um, when we've met back in April, we had two C M I P work sessions with the commission. And since we've produced a document, there have been some slight changes. And those changes, like Doug said, are are mostly a majority of the changes are shifting funds. We really aren't adding things to the budget. In some cases, there are a few things where some things were added to the budget, but a majority of it is shifting through funds. So how this report is set up, uh, we can see we're looking at six years and uh, the six year starts with the twenty-twenty-one amended budget. It goes out to the twenty-twenty-six. Annual year. And then also on the left-hand side of the page, we can see the departments. And also the projects that are associated with the departments. And what I want to do is just kind of march through each of those projects. So we have a future fire station land acquisition. Uh, the funding was moved in twenty-twenty-two to the dedicated sales tax. And that amount was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the the next is the knowledge department. Uh, we have online services, which is. Also in the county general fund, and that is a. A half million dollars in each fund, so it comes up to a million dollars. And this is mostly for security, security. And then uh, the court management system, which is municipal court, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, that is a new project. And then we also have the uh, police station major improvements. And this is a new funding for for the police department to just kind of help with. They have multiple projects. Going on and we kind of just lumped some money together into a major facility improvements for them. Also, we have the uh, in public works, we have uh, new car wash improvements and then. Also a new storage shop with fleet. And then also we have a fuel infrastructure replacement. And um, with the first two, the car wash improvements and also the fleet storage shop. These are have grant funding to match those, and there's also funding in the county general fund. So the car wash improvements is a total project of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And with thirty thousand dollars coming from our general funds. And then also the fleet storage shop, it is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project. With thirty-two thousand dollars coming from our general funds. And then our fuel infrastructure is funded across our general uh, county general fund and our city general fund. And it's a two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar project. And then the sheriff's department, uh, getting a new jail management system, and it is um, funded across. Uh, multiple funds. And one of the things about this jail management system is sheriff's department is not the only department to use this. So we have municipal court that utilizes it, the police department that utilizes it. Also, community corrections that utilizes it. So it's funded across the uh, alcohol fund. Uh, county general fund and the city general fund, and it totals three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we have parks, restrooms. Uh, some of the funding uh, in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Has been moved to the dedicated sales tax. And then we also have a shop building where we did increase the budget a hundred and five thousand dollars for parks. And this is related just to increases in a building cost. And then we have a Yco Lake dredging project, which is a half million dollars, which included. Shifting some funds is also an increase in the budget. And then we have the amphitheater dredging, which is a totally new project that was not here before when we met with the commission back in. April. And then next we have the uh, community center improvements and the funding shifted here uh, to dedicated sales tax. Next slide, please. Uh, so the street level imagery uh, for the appraisers office was shifted out uh, from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six. Uh, and that's just because the praiser uh, did not quite need it in twenty-twenty-five, who pushed it out to twenty-twenty-six. And then we have the elections office parking lot, where we did have a portion of it funded in the elections levy. And we had the funding in twenty-twenty-two, but we moved all the funding to the county general fund and we did move it up a year because. It it just really needed to be done. And then online services, uh, I covered that earlier. That was related to cybersecurity and there's a million dollars across. The city and the county general fund. Then also kind of touched on public works where they had the car wash and the fleet storage shop and the fuel infrastructure. Replacement uh, that that all those were funded across multiple funds. And then we also do have this new here is facility improvements for the county. And basically what happened here is uh. We, we did increase the budget a little and uh, did move some of the funding. We had some of the funding in operating budget. We actually moved some of it back over to uh, capital side. And here again is the sheriff's department, uh, jail management system that I talked about earlier. This is the county funding portion of it. And as we move into the dedicated sales tax, we have um, one of the first project we talked about. Was the fire department land acquisition. And so that's a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars here. And then we also have a fire station facility improvements. And um, due to cutting the budget back for the COVID budget, we we did have to increase the facility improvements. Just because the fire, fire department is in some dire straits and needed to get some things done. And then next uh, is the fire generator project, and we did move uh, some of the funding to another fund. And then uh, parks and recreation. This is where we uh, kind of touched on earlier where we moved park restrooms from the park fund over into the dedicated sales tax. So this is what that is. And then we had neighborhood park improvements. Uh, this is a new project. And then also public works uh, and a dedicated sales tax. Did some shifting of some things with the funds just to make sure that um, we could afford some things over the special street and highway fund. We did have some budget increases like with annual pavement preservation program. And so the next slide, we're looking at uh, still looking at capital cash here. Uh, so one of the big things happened here is uh, concept studies and rollaways. We did shift some funds from a dedicated sales tax into uh, special street and highway. And then also going down into the special parks and recreation fund. Uh, they did have a grant match for a fitness court. There's a hundred and five thousand dollars in there for the fitness court. And then they also got a match of twenty-five thousand dollars, which brings to like a total of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a fitness court. And then also we can see like grant, grant matches that we have for public works or car wash improvements and the fleet storage. Which I kind of talked about earlier. Next slide.
Reggie, could you go back to the slide just for a moment? I I want to be. Clear, one-three-zero-six, annual neighborhood street repair. Just to be clear, that is not the total amount we spend on street preservation and street repair. This is just the amount of the budget increase.
Yeah, and and so what happened here is uh, we have some in debt also, and so we what we did was move some over from 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 debt.
Just that amount, though?
Yes, thank you. So next we have a kind of bringing the cash projects to an end here, and this is sewer and storm water. And uh, basically one of the things that we were going through the budget process when we met with commission, uh, we did have the. Uh, sewer fund built up and just as the department started to look at it. Uh, and looking at some of the sourcing they had going on, projects to get done. Decided to uh, in order to protect their fund balance and being realistic about the projects that they could get done, they they did reduce some of their projects. With it's and then sewer system. And then also with uh, just going through the stormwater utility uh, both. Budget office and also the department decided to reduce some of the projects here for stormwater utility. Just to make sure that we could afford and have a fund balance and in a positive budget in the future. So, next slide. So these are our debt projects. And so we can see the annual neighborhood street repair that we just asked about. That's a hundred thousand dollars that was moved to cash. But there is, there is other uh, the these are just the changes. There are, there are other amounts for. Annual neighborhood street repair within debt. And then we have the fire station. For for Turner, uh, where we did add two point four million dollars in twenty-twenty-two, and this is related to increased building costs. And then we have the C S I lab, uh, which is basically we just rounded the number up to a million, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we also have sewer system. Um, some of the big changes here are basically. The last project at the bottom of page, uh, sewer system did have those set at like two million dollars. Worth a million dollars now, and then where the blanks are, there was also two million dollars, so um. They decided not to take out any debt those years, so reduced their. And then some of the others are just some name changes. And moving to the next slide. And so these are all new projects that uh, were not uh, in the schedules when we met with the mission. Back in April, and they are related to uh, Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. And we we, which we refer to as W F I, and then uh, using it utilizing the state revolving loan fund. To get some sewer projects done and stormwater projects. Now I'll turn it back over. Now I'll turn it back over to.
I'm sorry, mayor, I didn't want to jump in inappropriately, but I I just wanted to catch Reggie before he went on. Okay, great. Can you go back to that prior prior five oh, six, three. Says eighth street park, whereabouts in all the both under. Loan fund and the water infrastructure finance and infant and the with you. What is, where is eighth street park?
I do not know that right off.
We have both Jeff Fisher and Angel Overt on the line, so we could let one of those two address that.
Yes, a lot of money.
Yeah, Jeff Jeff Fisher here, I believe that is. On the west side of eight street between. Anne Barnett. If I remember correctly, it it's hardly noticeable, Angel could probably speak to its value much better than me.
Well, it's just a lot of money going going in over there, so I'm trying to, you know, ask. You're talking about over six million, six point one million dollars and I know this is just.
I believe this, I believe this slide is to capture the. Amount of work around the combined system and leveraging that work that needs to be done in the combined wastewater and stormwater system. With other needs like parks projects. Jersey Creek, for example, eight street part, you know, wherever we can add benefit to the community and that's what this represents. So it's not spending money on the park itself necessarily.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's the the right clarification, Jeff and Commissioner, it does get confusing when you see it, there is. The green space of this park that sits on the top, but this is a an area that floods out down below. And I think as Jeff described it, as you come through and you have a a lot of storm issues all throughout this area and this kind of. Works through it, so it's just collectively described as the eight street park area for where all this work takes place. Actual park is very little and no, we would never. It certainly would not be prioritized to be a three million dollar project to come in just for that park, but. It will improve it in the end, so it doesn't go underwater, I guess, every time it rains, but that's not the reason we're depicting.
Or that general vicinity, then that's the way I understand it.
So I guess that's a good question, is that considered a basin such as Muncie Creek Basin, is that? One of the basins we've identified that needs significant work, Jeff?
Well, it's. It's a, it's a real low spot right now and it does hold water and it does flood and what I think we would like to do is. Correct stormwater issues and then harness that park, make it something attractive and. And usable to the community in that area, beautiful and so that that's our objective in these in these types of projects. Green infrastructure, make it a park that people like to use and that's aesthetically appealing.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Townsend, Mr. Lindsay, could we go back to, I believe it's slide forty, maybe thirty nine? And it showed some money in twenty twenty two for Fairfax.
At a five hundred and seventy six thousand dollars.
Right, what?
Twenty one amended budget.
What is that right there? What is that?
Oh, so that is money that is available with Fairfax industrial area, we looked at the revenues. And just updated the number for what's available for the Fairfax industrial area improvements.
Fisher and Debbie Johnson may be able to jump into, this is the money that we built in place from the TDD that was placed on the. Is it the central industrial district project that was done on the north end of Fairfax and at the time we did that, we. Allocated that or we put a a special TDD on that project, which allowed us to expend money throughout other areas of Fairfax for. Sidewalk curb, some street improvement and we work with the Fairfax industrial association for that. It was noted that we work with them for the allocation of how this funding is expended.
Okay, that's correct. We had, we have it budgeted, I believe at a hundred and thirty thousand per year. Which is the revenue that we receive, but this balance was what has accumulated over the last several years that hasn't been spent. So we went ahead and added that to the twenty twenty one amended budget.
Okay, so I know that there are several projects that the Fairfax industrial association is interested in having done. And I guess I was. When I didn't see any money in twenty twenty two. To be spent, that was puzzling to me, so I'll go back to them, maybe their requests are under unfounded. Unfunded, I'm sorry, projects earlier, so this is money available.
Right, and and I believe what you're seeing here is just the change in the C M I P. That I think, I believe the C M I P has a hundred and thirty thousand budgeted out each year. This is just the change for twenty twenty one, is that correct, Reggie?
Yes. It's updated number.
So what is the change here? I'm I'm still missing it, I'm sorry.
Just that we we had not shown this within the budget document, the revenue that accumulated from the TDD in the past.
Oh.
What we're doing now is showing the revenue that had accumulated from the past now.
So that is the change.
Yes, the the original, the original budget would have been a hundred and thirty thousand, so this would have been an additional four hundred and. Forty six thousand that we added to the twenty twenty one amended.
Okay, but that's not to say there won't be some expenditures for Fairfax in some way in twenty twenty two.
Right, we and we have budgeted a hundred and thirty thousand going out each year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Commissioner, if I may, Miss Steven, I believe this, is this the money that's going toward their signage project?
Yeah, Commissioners, I just want to let you know that this money is going to be being drawn down against because we do have. Items that are constructed that should be being delivered here in the next month or so, I would hope. For their entryway signage that has been a project that we've been working with them on for some time.
Okay, and that's why I was again confused not seeing the expenditure, I know that was anticipated. And I also know they have some other projects that mayor may not qualify for use out of this pot, so thank you.
Bishop Burles.
Thank you, Mayor, and I was hoping to gain a little bit more knowledge from Commissioner Townsend's question. Okay, it's number sixty forty five, the call point bio solids digestion. And if Reggie helped me. I'm sorry, what'd you say, Mayor?
Commissioner, you're you're cutting out periodically.
Okay, thank you, I'll I'll try to, I'm looking at number sixty forty five. Did you get that?
Reggie, can you direct Rocky as to where that's, which one that is?
That's that's the call point bio solids digestion system.
Think that would be a slide forty, forty two, maybe?
It was just, it'd be up just a little bit from that one. Might be. Well, I don't see it. Anyway, I guess my question is, it shows the original budget for twenty one was ten million, twenty twenty one. You amended it with another ten million and then in twenty twenty two, another ten million. So the question I have over on the far right column, twenty one through twenty six. Is the twenty two, ten million, the last money that's going to go towards that project?
Reggie, would you like me to jump in? This is Jeff. Thank you, there has been no added money to the project, the original total project estimate is seventy point five million. And that is still the same. I think what Reggie's doing each time is just updating that year's allocation of dollars towards that project, is that right, Reggie?
Actually, I I I do not see the project, so I.
I don't remember seeing it either.
I don't know that it's on the change list, I don't think it is. Which would be accurate to what you said, Jeff, it wouldn't be.
I'm looking at page. It's on page four ninety two, sixty four five.
Okay, so Commissioner, you're referring to the actual budget document, not to the stuff we're presenting tonight?
No, I'm I'm looking right at, well. That could be, that could be true, I'm looking at the book. By page number by item number one, it says the projects down the side. It was the same, it was, I just see additional twenty million dollars for the project, but I don't see it funded the rest of the way through twenty 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 six. But I just wanted some clarification, I can talk off.
And and I'm I'm looking at it in the budget document, so what you see, Commissioner, and that's why it didn't show up tonight and and based like what Mr. Fisher said. The funding for it was ten million in twenty twenty one, so when you see the second column of amended twenty twenty one, ten million. That's just reflecting the budget is the same as it was as we started the year, so there's no change to that. And then in twenty twenty two, we have the ten million and that's the, yeah, that would reflect the last year of funding. That's going into the the project. And Reggie, that is on page four ninety two of the budget book. You see that through your scroll to it, you can probably confirm that or Debbie, one to what I said is accurate.
And Doug, thank you, that's how I read it, I was just curious. I think stated it. Last payment towards.
I'm I'm sorry, Commissioner, you were cutting out a lot through what you just said, so I really didn't catch. What you're quite, if you had a question in it.
Maybe if, maybe I could try to, again, the the total project cost is seventy point five million, the project isn't to be complete till twenty twenty three. Maybe that will help.
But all all the funding reflected is done as far as our budget is going forward. I don't think we're showing, you wouldn't be doing additional money in twenty twenty three, we would issue the last amount of debt next year. And I think that is the Commissioner's question that we we complete our funding going to it in twenty twenty two.
And some of that debt was also issued prior to twenty twenty one, so that's why you're not seeing the full seventy million.
Thank you for that. Be and I just wanted to see how fast that project had accelerated forward and was being paid off. That was my question and anything else, I'll either chat or something.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any other questions, I do want to respond back to Commissioner Kane, I have communicated with staff and they've indicated that there is the. In going through it, the potential to change the scope of the park project out on Hutton Road from the what was put in. Originally, which was a much more full, full blown park to be over a hundred and or over a million dollars and like. This would be to create more of a a road leading into an area and having some grills and benches on that site without doing it. It's such a full blown and that number is noted to be, could be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and if we are. In agreement that that's what our target should be for that area, then we could reprogram our C M I P budget to to reflect that. And and work in that direction.
Well, I certainly and and all along, there was supposed to be a park next to it. And when you look at how much money that we spend on the the surrounding parks. East of four thirty five and which is great and I and I wish I had as many as they did. The maintenance, the upkeep and everything else that goes with that, I think this is a small amount of money. Until somebody starts developing that other property and we can tie in with theirs and make it bigger.
Miss, do you have a comment?
Debbie?
Yes, I wanted to go back to Commissioner Townsend's question on the Fairfax industrial area. I did look in the C M I P and it does look like we are not showing the budget going forward beyond twenty twenty one. Which should not be the, we do receive a hundred and thirty thousand in revenue each year until the the. Each building, I think, has an assessment for ten years, so I'm, I think that that should be going out further, I I need to check into how long that goes. But it is, it's not currently showing in the C M I P.
Okay, thank you for checking up and following up on that, yeah, that, like I said, that was puzzling to me not to see any money, that's how I'd interpret it, thank you.
Right, the the addition that we added in twenty twenty one, I believe, was just the accumulated dollars that we'd already collected. But there should have been some additional funding going forward, so I will, I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Miss Von Achen.
Yeah, back to Commissioner Kane's inquiry on Hutton Park. So on slide thirty seven, there's a line for general improvements to community facilities. And paid out of the city, well, the consolidated city county park general fund. And if there, so there is funding available that could be shifted for. And dedicated for that Hutton Park, which was, you know, ranked, you know, is it's one of the ranked unfunded. Capital projects and that we demonstrated in the previous slides.
Commissioner Bynum.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to support the concept of a scaled down version for the Hutton Road Park. If there's a way to place that in a C M I P such as what Kathleen Von Achen suggests. And move it into a more current status than, you know, multiple years into the future. It's at least a starting place in order to generate park space. In an area in Piper that is pretty accessible, so I would really be willing to support that effort. Scaled down at the two hundred and fifty thousand. With the hope that park improvements later can come. And and as Kathleen stated, perhaps find a place for it in the C M I P, thank you.
Part of the thing was we were going to work with the developer who hasn't started developing yet. So we could tie that little section into a walking trail around that community. And so all I'm asking for is something to to piecemeal together until we can get a developer to move in there and and do something a little nicer.
I would support that, that that process, you know, that strategy that. You know, let's put ourselves in a position to to bring that amenity, I will say I'm still very concerned with all the other. Capital projects, you know, I I think specifically a key key lane, the that project. You know, from Gibbs Road to Douglas and then really from Douglas to Fifty Fifth Street. Because as I drive that in the mornings, it's it's frightening to see the number of kids who. Actually will walk to Turner High School using that route and the roads are not. actually will walk to Turner High School using that route, and the roads are not good, and people avoid the side of the roads because of the deterioration of the roadside, partly due to lack of good stormwater control. I fear that that is an accident waiting to happen. And so I think that that's a, in terms of safety, it's a priority. Commissioner Markley?
I just wanted to second that, Mayor. I think that has always been on the radar as long as I've been on the commission, and it's been on the radar because it's just not a very well-designed street. It's, you know, too narrow, and it's too windy, and it's bad for all of those reasons. But I think the safety reason is fast becoming the most critical, particularly with the new football field being in that vicinity and the plant fire station being in that vicinity. I think the traffic levels there are going to be different than what they are now, and I think that needs to be taken into account so that we can make sure that that project is one that we don't put off so long that something bad happens, and then we all have to look at each other and say, if we only would have done that earlier.
All right, Mayor, if there are no further questions on that, we will proceed to the long-term financial forecast. Put this together tonight to go through and take a look at really where we're at in terms of funding. I know as the commission goes through and considers what you're looking at in this year's budget, you want to have a good understanding of what decisions you're making now can have an impact on years going forward, because anytime we make a decision that goes beyond one-year funding, it does carry out. So a lot of the projects we just discussed, those are typically one-year funding. However, we decided to issue more debt or something like that. Obviously, that plays into it. So what we've done here is Ms. Von Achen has gone through, and she's built her assumptions as to how we look into the forward years, and then she will describe each of the each of the areas that we're working with between her and Ms. Johnson. So I'll turn it over to Kathleen.
Thank you, Mr. Bach. Typically, we provide a financial forecast in the fall, but this year, we're giving you a preview during the budget process because of the level of funding, new one-time dollars we're getting. We thought we should give you an outlook or a view of the out-year impact. So generally, just want to cover briefly the assumptions behind the forecast that you're going to be seeing in a moment. They're broken up by the economy, revenues, and expenditures. Generally, we're anticipating CPI based on what the Federal Reserve provided us several months, several weeks ago. The CPI for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four is at two point two percent, and then after that, it's one point four percent. And although that's a, an economic indicator that's constantly changing, so we expect jobs, our total jobs in the Wyandotte County to recover in twenty-twenty-two, back to the level they were back in twenty-nineteen. And we anticipate a one percent growth rate in the number of jobs generated in our county beginning in twenty-twenty-three. The unemployment rate is estimated at five point five percent for twenty-twenty-three, and then slowly trend down to four point eight percent by twenty-twenty-four, five. We are anticipating an assessed value increase of nine percent in twenty-twenty-three, and that's because we anticipate that the value of commercial properties will return back to, or that the growth rate will recover. I think it was impacted by COVID this past year, and so or in twenty-twenty-two, we expect it to recover as a result. But then thereafter, we anticipate average growth rate of the assessed value to increase by six percent every year. On the revenue side, we have projected that sales tax will increase three point three percent every year, and that compensating use tax, which is mainly comprised of online sales, increasing by four point three percent, just slightly more than the sales tax. Generally, in line with the assessed value assumption, property taxes are expected to increase nine percent in twenty-three, and then six and a half percent thereafter. And the reason it's six and a half percent is because we've included on average the, a value of expiring IRBs. For the, for the Board of Public Utilities pilot for franchise tax for water and for electric, we are anticipating, we were keeping the rate the same as it is now, and we anticipate that consumption level will increase by a modest one and a half percent each year. For residential trash, we are anticipating a three percent increase every year to accommodate the increases in those contracts. The, on the expenditure side, we do have in place an assumption for a three percent increase in the first year of the forecast, and then only two percent thereafter. Health benefits and retirements are also a component of personnel costs, and those are anticipated to increase within a range of four to six percent. All other operating expenditures, like consulting services, professional services, contracts, and commodities are all anticipated to grow at the CPI rate or based on the growth rate within the contracts. And then lastly, but most importantly, the forecast assumes, it's based on the CMIP that Reggie just went over. And for the, for cash capital, we're anticipating, or generally speaking, we're increasing the level of cash capital paid from the city and the county general funds to range from four to five percent of total expenditures, where in the previous five or six years, it's only been two and a half percent. So that's a significant, you know, investment in our community.
Kathleen, if I may, before you advance to the next slide, I'll just, a couple of things I wanted to comment on, as you talked about revenues and mentioned IRBs, just for members of the public watching. Those are industrial revenue bonds. So the new industrial distribution centers you see coming out, she commented how those IRBs are paying off. That means they're coming back on, they're coming on the tax roll at a higher rate, and they're causing the values to go up, so they will help to offset and provide money into our economy. So that investment to make those projects happen now starts to reflect itself on an annual basis once we get out into twenty-three and twenty-four to help influence that six and a half percent. Also, on the other side of that equation, I would ask commissioners to take note that Ms. Von Achen has used a two percent for our salary changes after twenty-twenty-three. I think that's a very limiting number, and it's one we should think about, but it says more in status quo of what we've done over previous years, though we've looked at doing some things here currently. That's really a smaller number than I would like to see in that category, and it's one as we think about how much revenue we have going forward, or what we do with our revenue flow, if we just leaving enough money behind to make sure we are fairly paying our employees and I'm able to retain and hire in that regard.
I also want to point out, the CPI, under economics, the CPI forecast at one point four percent for twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-seven does not include the one trillion dollar infrastructure bill, nor does it include the proposed three point five billion dollar reconciliation bill that is going to be moved through Congress now. And there is traditionally, a lot of debate about that level of spending, and they're comparing it to what happened during the nineteen-sixties when we were funding the Vietnam War and the War on Poverty, that when you spend for guns and butter at the same time, you actually make inflation a permanent part of the equation. And so the forecast expenditures, specifically for salaries and contracts and so forth, will have to be adjusted upward if if that bill passes, and if, in fact, does have the effect to generate additional inflation and really kind of a perpetual growth in the inflation rate. Commissioner Felbrook?
So, just an additional question around that, because I know we're looking at making our salaries in certain sections more up-to-date with competition. Does the salaries, these three percent in twenty-twenty-three, is that assuming we've already equilibrated salaries for our folks by then? Doug?
Yeah, in what we're looking at in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, we've allowed some room to try to make some adjustments in some of those particularly difficult areas to hire in or retain employees. Yes.
Okay, so we've gotten that, then by then, we've gotten that accomplished, and so this will be more of a cost raise, cost of doing business, so to speak.
Yes.
All right. And yes, I agree that it needs to be more than that two percent. Thank you.
All right, Kathleen?
So on the next slide, we like to show you some graphs to show how all of those assumptions impact the fund balance. And so we're going to start with the combined general fund, and then move into each of the individual three general fund funds, which is city, county, and parks. And after each graph, we're going to then show you the detail of the revenues and expenditures for the most of those years, so that you can see how it relates. This graph basically shows, it displays the bottom line of the detailed information that we'll show you on the next graph. So this, think of this as the amount left in the checking account, right? So these are all three of the general, all three of the general funds combined. And you see the bar graphs, which are the value of the amounts in the, in the fund for each, at the end of each year. And then there's also another line there going horizontally across that demonstrates what the fund balance would be, or where it needs to be if we were to meet the minimum reserve. And the reserve policy right now is that we should keep two percent, or two months of our operating expenditures in the checking account in order to cover for any kind of operating disruptions or for, you know, budgeting uncertainty. And so as you can see, in nineteen through twenty-twenty-three, the bars are higher than that box line, but then after it, it, but then after that, it's below that. So this represents, you know, total expenditures, and then you divide that, or you divide, well, you divide twelve months, and so each month, the two months of a year represents basically sixteen point seven or seventeen percent of total, of the total in reserve, and that line you can see is, is quite a bit above the balances beginning in twenty-twenty-five. Now, one thing I did want to mention here, there's quite a bit to talk about with this graph, but one important note is that there, the amount, how much it's grown in twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, and that's because we collected one-time ARPA funding, which has increased our fund balance temporarily. But I did want to point out that in the, as I mentioned earlier, in the, the CMIP budget that we presented to you, over the next five years, we're increasing the level of our cash capital beginning in twenty-twenty-three. It's in, basically increasing by five million dollars each year. And that, that seems, you know, like a wonderful thing, because we are really trying to respond to the public's expressed desire to invest in our infrastructure, but it's still not enough because the target to, the target to get to where we need to be to really truly maintain our streets is twenty more million a year. So so just keep that in mind. We're on the path, and we are trying to find the funding for that need, but we're still needing to find more resources for, to fully implement those, those needs. And so that policy, you can see, is drawing down, or that approach of increasing our cash capital is drawing down our fund balance. And in the coming years, we will have to continue to work towards implementing more efficiencies or finding new resources in order to keep our fund balance at a minimum reserve target level. So next slide. So this slide actually includes the, the fund financial statements. They're provided in a modified accrual basis, similar to how they're presented in the CAFR. And the, there's a lot of numbers here, but let me just walk you through this first one so you understand. There are five revenue categories here across the top, and then, you know, revenue for taxes, for intergovernmental revenues, the ARPA fees and permits and interest income. And those are all the categories that are truly what they call revenues. After that, there's transfers and other financing sources, and those are, are, that's kind of a separate revenue category. And by presenting it this way, it lets you see across the line, on the subtotal for revenues, you can see with the consistent level of revenue collected each year. And that's because transfers and other operating expenditures, they often vary a lot from year to year. So providing that subtotal really helps you to see, you know, how things have progressed over those years. Now, we've provided nineteen because that's kind of a baseline prior to the pandemic. And then twenty-twenty represents the revenue level. During the pandemic, we've provided what we originally budgeted for twenty-one, what we're proposing in the budget for twenty-twenty-one amended, and then what we're proposing for twenty-twenty-two. And then five years of forecast years, so you can see.
Kathleen, Commissioner Walters?
Thank you. If you could go back to slide forty-five for just a second. You were talking about our reserves being in excess of our guidelines. And in our policy, it says that when the reserves exceed the minimum balance, at the end of each fiscal year, we need to do something to fix that. And it doesn't say, and it gives us five options, but one of the, one of those options, not just let it ride and take advantage of it in future years. So it seems like, well, first, it's very hard to predict. As you recall, we were predicting a four million dollar shortfall last year and ended up with a six million dollar surplus. But I believe, according to our policy, if we have surpluses like this or excesses to our reserve policy, we should do something to fix that immediately. Is that the way you read the policy?
Yeah, so the two-month operating reserve is just the minimum operating reserve. There's also an additional reserve called an emergency reserve, which adds an additional month. So for a total of three months. And the policy actually states that if the reserves exceed the emergency reserve, then we would actually have, you know, be required to go back to the commission and seek action for the excess above that. And so we are, we're estimating that with the ARPA revenues, that actually, we are exceeding that twenty-five percent at the end of, just barely, at the end of twenty-twenty-five, or no, twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry. But the proposed budget that you're all being asked to review and to examine actually proposes that those excess reserves be spent on one-time items like the cash capital, which then you see progresses downward. So, but this line is actually the two-month reserve, not the three months. So.
Well. I'm looking at the policy right now, and it just says in the event reserves exceed the minimum balance requirements, and you're saying that's the three months, not the two months?
Well, that's how I remember it, but I might be wrong. I'm sorry. I just, I thought that's what I, how I read it or wrote it.
Thank you.
But to Commissioner Walter's point, if the money, if we exceed even the twenty-five percent, the three months, we've got to true that up. But what you're suggesting is what we're going to be looking at are one-time expenditures. But what you're suggesting is what we're going to be looking at are one time expenditures that would true that up, which would also, I think Commissioner Walters is going to is a mill levy decrease, if I'm not wrong here.
Well, that's one of the five options. I mean, yeah, there are five options, all of which makes sense and and obviously reducing our revenue through mill levy reduction is one of those five options.
Okay, Kathleen.
All right, so the, so regarding revenues, you can see that it between 19 and 20, they dropped from from $210 million to 202 million. That you can see that that's a significant decrease in in revenues and it's attributed to COVID. That, of course, is just for the the three city, county, and parks general funds. It doesn't show all the revenue impact from all the other funds. We are recommending or estimating a revenue increase in 2021 amended of $246 million, which is, you know, wow, a big increase, right? But part of it, a big part of it of the increase is is due to the $20 million that these three funds will be receiving in ARPA revenue replacement from the federal government in 21 and then in 2022 at 14 million. So those are the, those are the amounts that I didn't expect it to jump out there like that. So those are the amounts for just those three funds. And and as I mentioned, the the other city funds, like the dedicated sales tax fund and the sewer fund and the tourism fund, all those other funds also were impacted by the revenue loss. Uh, the other thing I wanted to mention on the expenditure side is, you know, we've got personnel and services, commodities, grants, and then capital outlay. And you can see that our department, our departments really pitched in and found and I'm significant savings on in their expenditures, having dropped them from $206 million to 197 or 98 million in 2020. Those expenditures are are clawing back up so to 235 million in 21 and 243.7 million in 2022. And those are a result of increased expenditures for for personnel and for capital. But I I did want to point out that there is a one time kind of expenditure happening in the services line in 2021 amended of roughly $5 million. That that is health department vaccination operations, which of roughly $5 million that we are funding through the city general fund. And that is being offset by $2 million in CARESAC dollars we received in the prior year as a as a credit against our public safety expenditures, as well as a $3.5 million FEMA grant that we're expecting to receive in 2021 on the revenue side. So so it's a little bit higher than but but that's because of a one time cost related to the vaccinations. Going forward, if you look over in the forecast years, you can see the increase in capital outlay that I mentioned earlier. So typically in the past, we've spent, we've spent roughly around four or five million a year in capital outlay. But in in this fund, it's cash cap capital and it includes, it's basically half and half equipment and capital projects. And now we are recommending that we better fund this level, this area, because this is the, this is the level of funding that we typically were spending on these needs prior to the Great Recession. And after the Great Recession, there was a, you know, a number of austerity measures taken. And since then, the level of capital outlay paid for with cash was never, it it just wasn't re re increased or re-upped back to the prior level. And so this is what we're proposing is to do. So you can see it really increases quite a bit. And so that additional increase, 5 million a year over five years is $25 million. And it draws down the fund balances, this assumption. Now, certainly some of it is covered by the ARPA revenue replacement that we received in the prior two years, but it's still the ARPA revenue replacement funded true revenue loss as well during the pandemic year and in 2021. But it also covered a number of needs that, you know, there's still ARPA revenue replacement left and some of it will be funding these one time capital needs.
Kathleen, I have a question. So these these capital outlay, so we're restoring what was lost or set back from the Great Recession? And but is there also a commensurate decrease in the debt funded capital projects? Or are we actually getting out in front of projects?
Yeah. So I mean, as you know, we've been trying very hard to maintain our our policy of on the governmental debt side of not issuing any more than roughly 15 to 18 million a year and in governmental debt in order, because our outstanding debt is substantial compared with our comparable, you know, neighbors or others, other cities of our size. And so it's, that's been the policy is to, you know, not not debt finance too much. And so, so yes, that's true.
Well, no, the question was, we are going to maintain the same level of debt finance that we've been doing so that we don't increase the debt too much, but we are adding cash outlays here for capital.
That is correct.
Thank you. Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am trying my best to follow along on this subject. Can you describe or explain to me what capital outlay, what it entails, what it actually is? Because I'm sure I'm not, for the for the residents who are watching out in Wyandotte County, they may be wondering the same thing. We're talking about capital outlays. What exactly does that mean? What does that entail?
Well, so actually, the the CMIP sheets that you just were reviewing earlier, that is what it's it's cash capital. I probably should have put cash capital in here instead of capital outlay. That's what it is. It's cash funded capital. And it's not just a capital project such as street improvements or improvements to public facilities, you know, new parks or what have you. It's also equipment. There's a lot of equipment that our public safety departments and other departments need, a lot of vehicles and other equipment that needs to be replaced every year. And so half, pretty much half of this, these figures here are equipment and the other half are those other items, cash capital. And all of the detail for all of these, these numbers is provided in the budget book in those CMIP budget documents. So so you could actually find this exact number in the budget book. So.
Okay, that's, that's what I figure what the capital outlay was, but I just wanted some clarification. So thank you very much for that.
Right. So and if there aren't any other questions, I just wanted to point out that lastly, at the very bottom is what I was talking about before, the 17% minimum target.
Oh, sorry.
We, so how do, how do we come up with 17%? Well, if you, if you take two into 12 months, you get 17%. That's how that comes up, how we come up with that. So basically, we're trying to keep on the side two months worth of our annual expenses in case, you know, unexpected things happen or our revenue estimates are way off or what. So it's a recommended practice by the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's also encouraged by our credit rating agencies. And in the past few years, we have exceeded that 17%. It's been hovering around 20%. During 2020, we we ticked up to 22%. And it's, and it's higher during 21 and 22 because of the influx of one time money, because of that ARPA money you see above the 20 million, the 21 million in 21 and the 14 million in 2022. But that's one time money, you understand. And so so in 2022, we're expecting the general fund to end the year with 21.6% in reserves. And 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 then after that, that percentage declines slightly down to 17 and a half, 14 to 12 and a half to and 12 and a half again. And then it starts ticking back up to 15% in the last year, the forecast. And in fact, my model goes all the way out to 2040. And by 2040, we're way above, we're way above 40 or 50%. So there, there is, you know, good news out there. But but we still need to continue to think about the capital investment that we need to make towards maintaining our facilities and the roads so that we can provide the quality service that our residents demand. And, you know, we need to do that with the tools, we need the tools and resources to do that. So to say, now, and now the mayor mentioned earlier that, you know, he was concerned about inflation rate. And certainly the inflation rate I have in here is, you know, pretty conservative. If inflation were to increase, then these these percentages would decline so because our expenses would go up. So there is a lot of variables in the forecast. Perhaps in the out years, we might need to increase salaries from the 2% rate I I I put as an assumption to 3 or 4%. And that would further decrease the increase the expenditures and decrease the fund balance. So you know, a lot of variables and it's, this is just a snapshot of how we think things are going to look today. So. Now, the next slides are are the same, you know, the graph and then the the table for the three general funds, the city, the county, and the parks. And so I won't go into as much detail for each of these, but generally speaking, you know, the city general fund is the largest of the three general funds. And so so naturally, its trajectory or the display on the graph is, looks very similar to the the combined general fund. And again, you know, one time ARPA funding has increased our fund balance, but only temporarily. And but that structural deficit that I talked about, you know, persists beginning in 2024 and will require changes to take place for 2025 thereafter. So here is the the city general fund and its total expenditures for 2022 are $161 million and or revenues are 161 million matched with 161.9 million in in expenditures. And but then in the out years, you can see that the net difference or net change in fund balance is $9 million in 2023, 7 million, 6, 4, and 2 million in 2027. So and that is, again, due to that, that greater investment in capital outlay that is in the purple circle. One other thing to note is that the ARPA revenue replacement for the city general fund is 14.6 million in 2021 and 9.7 in 2022. And again, that's one time money because you can see it doesn't continue into the forecast years. It's just one time money. And we expect the the city general fund to end the year with 27.8% of in their fund balance. But as you can see, in the latter years, that that level declines due to the investment in capital outlay. So so Commissioner Walters did mention before that, you know, if we exceed, you know, the, let's say, the 25% three month threshold that we would then have to come back and ask for your direction on how to repair that. But that is for the combined general fund, not not just the city one. So and when you see the other two funds, you'll see that they're far below the the minimum reserve level.
So Kathleen, I want to break now that we are at 6:30.
Yes.
Second item.
Let's go. Right. Well, honestly, the the parks, just real quick, I'm going to go through the next two very quickly. The consolidated Parks General Fund, yeah, we've, we reduced expenditures substantially in 2020. But so that resulted in this this fun increasing its fund balance. And the recommendation is to use that increased, you know, savings in effect for additional capital projects in the out year. And this fund's pretty small, so we're not too worried about this funds. It has a very small impact on the the total city combined fund balance. So so we're, we're it's just part of the mix for the the combined general fund. Yeah. And so again, we have included additional capital outlay in this fund. This fund didn't receive as much ARPA revenue, and I don't mean receive. What I mean is that the calculation didn't more or didn't result in it receiving a lot of ARPA revenue. In fact, it was a ARPA positive in 2022. So so it's, it only got 200,000 in 2021. The, you can see that cash capital is increasing to 600 and 700,000 in 2024 and 2025 and thereafter. Let's go to the next one, general, the county general fund. The county general fund, so the minimum, the fund balance is at the minimum threshold all the way through 2025. And then after that, it it exceeds. So future valuation projections of assessed value are are making this fund balance grow. And and it reflects that it's going to result in a positive fund balance. So here's an opportunity for, you know, further discussion related to the mill. So. And so here's that information and I can go over the, you know, happy to answer any questions about these things and just trying to move the, move the move my section along here. So now the next section, actually, I, we are going to talk about the city debt and the county debt funds in similar fashion. But I'm going to hand it over to Debbie Johncher, who will be talking about that. And but I might interject with some few comments if she, if they come to, so go ahead.
Thank you, Kathleen. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Debbie Johncher, Deputy CFO. So this first slide is the city debt fund. And as you can see, what we're showing the fund balance from 2019 through 2027. And as you can see, for from 2020 to 2023, the fund balance is fairly low, but we do start to see growth starting in 2024. Just a couple of reasons for that. In 2020, we did use a portion of the fund balance to help pay for the new enterprise resource system that our new financial system. So that contributed to a little bit of the drop in 2020. Also, in the fall of 2020, we did a refinancing on several of our bond issues. So that did actually create some savings going into 2021. And then our debt does start increasing in 2022, contributing to the drop, the drop for the next two years.
Right. I did want to mention on that point, actually, that so in 2020, in order to avoid spending too much on cash capital, we decided to fund about $5 million in 2020 and 2021. And it thinks that would have been cash capital, but because of the nature of them, we decided to pay them off over a five year period. Usually when we issue bonds, we do it for 20 years. So paying off $5 million in five years has is put a little bit of a straight on this, on this fund. But as you can see, it's, it's coming around and. But as you could see, it's it's coming around and later in two thousand and twenty-four. So go ahead, Debbie, sorry.
Right. Well, and as Kathleen had mentioned earlier, you know, we previously, we've limited the amount of new projects that are funded each year with that, and that is resulting in future capacity that could either be used for additional debt or more funding for cash-funded projects. So the next slide just shows some of the detail for the debt service fund. The debt service mill levy is just over seventeen mills, and it generates about twenty-two million in property tax revenues. As you can see, that we have listed out the different revenues. And it's showing about twenty-four million, a little over twenty-four million for both two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. And that's also because in addition to the property tax revenue, we also receive TIF revenues as well as revenues from the sewer and stormwater funds to pay for their portion of the general obligation debt. We've received some reimbursements. That's from the Board of Public Utilities, and that's because of a road project that they are paying a portion of. And then the other financing source shows the, those are the transfers from the sewer sewer and stormwater funds. So as you can see, going going out, you know, in in two thousand and twenty-two, we're projecting an ending fund balance of around six hundred and twenty-five thousand and then four hundred and forty thousand in two thousand and twenty-three, but then it does start to pick up in two thousand and twenty-four. The next slide is the debt service fund for fund balance for the county debt service. Fund balance is around two to two and a half million through two thousand and twenty-four. The fund balance does include a transfer from the county general fund of about one point five million each year, starting in two thousand and twenty-two for the debt service on the general fund, on the juvenile center. And as I said, with the city debt service fund, this does result in future capacity to either addition, issue additional debt or to fund cash-funded projects. This is the detail on the county debt service fund. The current mill levy for this fund is two point two mills, and it generates about three point three million in property tax revenues. We also get reimbursements from BPU to pay portions of a couple of projects related to the radio system improvements that were done about five or six years ago. They do pay a portion of that. And then the other financing source that's listed there, you see it's one point two five million in two thousand and twenty-one and then one point five million with a slight increase going forward, and that's the transfer from the county general fund.
For the juvenile center.
For the juvenile center, correct?
Yeah.
So ending in two thousand and twenty-two, we're around two point million, two million for the for the fund balance, and it it stays around two to two point two million for the next couple of years, and then it does drop off slightly. But we're projecting balances out around one point five to one point seven million for the future years. And that's all I have on the debt service.
Thank you all. Then if there are no questions on that at this time, I'll go on to the the next section, gets into the maximum mill levy, as I noted, and I'll go to the next slide. When we move forward in July and we noted our expressed intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate, we adopted what would be effectively our maximum mill rate at that point. So that was set for the city of KCK, thirty-eight point four and thirty-nine point three-two for the county. So those are set as a maximum of what they were last year, and there would be no exceeding that. There is no requirement for the commission to take any additional action. I will all remember, that's always something we get into a discussion about. We already had that discussion earlier in the year, and then it's set. So the next slide, it just shows what our published rates will be for each of these areas. As they show it for that, the one we had not discussed so much is the the SMID. It sets out what that maximum mill rate will be, and you all will have to have to take decisive action on that as you go through and adopt the budget on on the ninth. And then, of course, what the library forwarded over to is to request or stating what their mill rate would need to be, and that is consistent from the previous years. There's a little bit of narrative on each one of these below as we talk about those. I will note specifically that last year, we had moved, we'd done a shift from our from the health department levy fund to the development disabilities, and we're making that shift back in this coming year. So it's it's neutral from an overall mill rate perspective. It just, we moved it between funds to balance things out in that last year, and we're correct, or putting that back in place this year. So this sets out where we are, what will be the published rates that you cannot exceed. Of course, the commission can take action to set a mill rate below any of the of these as you adopt the budget.
I I did want to point out one thing about the SMID. Their assessed value came in lower than it was the year before. So the increase that there that we're showing here actually generates the same level of revenue as in two thousand and twenty-one. Let's see.
All right, so future workshops and topics that the commission would like us to work on. I do reach out each year and ask, and go to the next slide each, all the elected department heads and appointed that if they have any, if they would like to come before the governing body. Sheriff Ash did pick me up on that, and has requested to come back on September second. He would have the opportunity to appear before you and probably state the condition. He didn't tell me what he would go into, but I know there are some future project needs over in the the jail that are of issue. And he will probably want to point those out. And the mayor informed me that there is a request from the commission to discuss more on the mill levy and pilot change implications. We can have a discussion about that. I do believe the information we've provided tonight on the long-range financial plan should provide you all some good information to think about, see how that works. If you look about these different areas, and if there are some specific things you would like us to prepare for that workshop, which I would assume we will do it on September second, we can work on that in advance if if you would like us to. Other than that, we have the revenue-neutral public hearing required that we are supposed to do, which is very close timeline to that of the budget adoption, but that's how the legislature sets it out from timeline that we need to have a hearing on this date. And then, of course, a planned budget adoption on September ninth. Mr. Mayor, is there other topics for workshops that we need to discuss or additional information we should prepare for that discussion on the second?
Right, so again, what we, are we ready to move on to the American Rescue Plan?
American Rescue Plan is tonight during the seven o'clock meeting because there's actual formal action on that, you know.
So again, I would ask that the commission get that to me quickly so that we can prepare for that. I did ask the administration, Kathleen, to prepare what the financial implications would be for various reductions, either the mill levy and or the pilot. Again, I think that the workshop provided tonight shows kind of long-range financial trajectory with the existing mill rate and existing sales tax rate and pilot with the projections, which, of course, can change in the model and can change the modeling. But we will be having that discussion on September second.
And Mr. Mayor, I think, well, we can discuss that. I believe we probably could bring those modeling formulas back in. I believe Kathleen has those. If we adjust a mill and it shows what happens in those out-year formulas. I believe the commission has worked with some of those models previously when we did some of our retreat work. I don't know how well it worked for the workshop that we can look at doing some of that.
I would also say that they get in the infrastructure committee's important context for that kind of discussion as they move forward. Any other questions or comments? All right, well, we are, we are adjourned, and we will gather again at seven o'clock for the regular session. Thank you.